We need April, April 1st.
In the process.
Sure.
Oh. I see. The middle, I think. Garcia. Here, here. Oh.
Okay.
Mission, her. Well. Pass. We have one.
Uh, so all Friday, we're going to mention. Five? The religions, five, and I say it's okay. His republic, and our nation, we got invisible, thirteen vessels. Okay. Generation of public comments. Clean City Commission need not over request. Yes. If there's public comments, you're right, this staff, I don't know, please get to another iteration, uh, correction. Uh, have anyone signed up? Was anything? Your public is bugs. Uh, item number two, reports. A reusable bag distribution at the April Friday, Thursday. Friday. Pressure on the event, whether or not Thursday events are, uh, viable, all criteria, to be used by, uh, patients. Check. Right.
Uh, they are on tablets. That tablet is per.
It had been, I have to record it, I didn't pass the wind.
Okay, and? Show me the hands.
Oh. Can say?
No, I'm just.
Okay, um. Okay. My impression of, of, of Thursday, and thank you very much for that, for your, for your force, uh, that particular, I didn't think about that. Uh, primarily, when we started out, I was just, with the goal, and I, when it was low, and I, just feel this, I can handle these stuff, uh, and all, we opted to not put these things. Uh, so visibility was, not with Chris. Uh, and with Bart, it's pretty easy, uh, to use. He took away, uh, the, I didn't get it, actually, in a way, not knowing, not even who's in that box, uh, I.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But it wasn't very many, uh, people. Probably only people stopped by with rent. I didn't.
But I just. Done. Rather than just, you know, they go to.
And then.
I would, people that, bring a car. At least stop, yeah.
Uh.
What do you think?
Eight. Right. I'm lost. For five, uh, okay. Exactly. We had no. We didn't have a banner, because of the wind was blowing, we didn't put a banner up. There. Uh. I will say, I put rocks on the table to hold papers down, and the rocks drew attention, and we were really trusting people about, about garbage and the recycling program and whatnot, uh, but I, I think. But I, I think. That was a one time, one time deal, uh, maybe later in the year. It might go. Uh, we thought the, uh, this other program coming up, similar to, uh, Public Works Day, and I think that would, and then in. Ember, at our. Day of caring, uh, and, uh, that might give. Is the law. It, it wasn't a. Us, I, I.
Yes. Um, I think. Again, that, that, that's people.
Here again, he definitely, could have made it more accurate.
Absolutely.
You have banners, the. Mask on up. Uh. I think we should. It, it, it. For now. I'll. If, if. Okay. I think had I, had I known more, come down to Thursday, we could have. Because, uh, we could have, we could have eliminated, I have nice, right generator, that, uh, lights. That's what, this was where we start. We were. Thank you.
One, I, I guess. This. Well, I mean, Thursday. Was all done. Everyone, okay, here we go. God. It. We. Who's that, which, which man, yeah. Four coming, right, that's. The. That. Also. I know it's for Canada, but, you know, maybe there's, um, performance, there's, like, the, the, uh, draft, there's, but, you know, maybe somebody, maybe this is something kind of, like, that. Or maybe, how would they, something, or, or, no, like, something, eat you. Some, exactly, so, oh. You know, but I don't, I don't, that's, and, and, however, I don't know, I feel.
We were.
Crazy person.
Uh, this, this, this next weekend, uh, if you, there's some lady there who uses, one time plastic bags, and. Also, these things. Uh, maybe, uh. With eyes, like quickly, uh, you.
Juicy. That, what you dress. What you do. Now, even if it's perfectly, but ask. But maybe it's one, no, no, no. Love, proud.
Just love that.
Idea.
Another thing I, I, on my head, it, uh, at our rock shows, uh, like real fortune, and we put various pictures or various rocks, and spin the, spin the spinner, and whatever the, I appointed you, that's what people. There we can do, reusable bag of water bottles, crayons. Magnets that. For the kids, oh. Uh, just, just a few things.
No, you, you believe. I said you. Yeah, it's really open, um, as far as Thursday, it's open to, um, you know, wherever, we have people that, from, have a suit of, John interest.
The, the reason I was asking. The, for the near. Um, they're trying to coordinate with us. It ends on May, so, it's, that, uh, fire. Fire, I mentioned. Fire, yeah, they wanted to do it, uh, so we thought about doing it, our. How, and, and setting, everything, um, you know, everything is, um. Obviously. Just so you're right in the same.
How many times here did we do the potion? Like three or four, three times, it, it bashes, and we did it twice. So, uh, if we were to. Use the various, uh, of, of what's happening downtown, Friday, the program coming up. What's that? What? The Clean City Expo. I just started, I just started, uh. I, I, I think that, I think that would be a, a more viable than.
What would be more?
By, by using, then you downtown.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Yeah.
It's nice to show that, well. But.
What would be the chances of getting a cloth banner, to put up on the east, uh, bring a cloth banner, say, if you're using our logo, uh? Uh, did it, uh? Did, was, did we make a routine?
Uh, we can press one out and see what we've got in the budget left.
Bring it right on the table, right? Uh, we got a table across. All right. Perfect, better. Not a problem. And. Any, any other, any other discussion on this?
You know.
We could, we could take, we could take it from the audience.
I'm just, hey, the microphone, so, so, somebody can hear everybody. Uh, there's only, that's a voice, I'm.
There, there are microphones, but they're not there, and I don't know where they are.
Ego.
We're working. There's nothing else on, on the report on reusable bags, on the item, uh, I, this part, check it out.
Well, we can get that information provided at the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, I had a quick, well, that. I like having. The business. When I had fifteen feet long, forty, all, and nine. Hmm. It's not, operating. I'm listening. So, that's, that's, that's an example.
Oh, yeah, I just.
Uh, so, so something would fit for us to, and.
That's, that's, that's.
Okay. I'm the, uh, mission requirement, the April second, two thousand nineteen, city, mayor and council members, for, for you. One, two. Open for the change that would happen. Well, all business. A, or a community involvement. Question, I should regard the, I, I'll give you some permission, both, community involvement in us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, as directed at the last meeting, Donna did, uh, put out a Facebook poll, so the results of that are in the memo, like, uh, altogether, reached a little bit over five thousand people, with, uh, four questions to ask, so I think she has all those results in there, if you have any questions with either of us? Or if you have anything to add, Donna?
Real fun to poll, actually, I really liked it, and, um. There were some comments, um, nothing, we didn't get it, uh, it's possibly, uh, certainly agree, um, and there was really. Organizing something, but, um, but, um, it was, it was good information. I hope, uh, it's safe.
Uh, on, on, on the poll, did they quickly name sound as, as volunteers?
Um, no.
Oh.
No, not really, but I saw that you got some volunteer.
Well, we got a couple of names written down in the, in the.
And I do get, oh, that's, uh.
I guess the, the second part of that direction last month was by reaching out to some of the local, uh, nonprofit organizations, as far as their willingness, or, uh, to partner with the Clean City Commission, cleanups, and that's something that we, we will do in the future, we just, we didn't have a chance to get to that this month, so.
I reached out, uh, huge number of, full organization, uh, and, but, uh, but I, I just, uh, uh, the doctor, lots of, items. Um.
Go, go ahead.
All right, just need to, I'm really good at that, um, so, I, um. Um, so, one thing that I've really heard, and just opened over at that major conference that I went, that, this people and not for them, and people a lot of time, as a city or a volunteer group, for doing things for people a lot, and they, and you, that, that you get, that are servers, servers are. So, if we find ways, this pool, then they're not going to, so, um, got me thinking about how this pool, and I'm always bringing up these ideas, we think, with, you know, and I'm just wondering, how can, um, have more, like, of, like, private partnerships, and not, like, um, and we. Just, if, or. You shared that, one of your whole questions, and I wrote to him, I said, oh, how is this big, this is so cool, but that groups get, um, nothing to, or, or, how accessible is that, like, if someone, he, 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 he really want to organize this, no. Are, are those things, are there steps? Things, it was, like, borrowing thing, okay, bye.
Well, we don't want the trash bags back, but we'll pick them up. I think, I think. Yeah. I think Ed and his staff have always been pretty, uh, ongoing and helpful with those groups, you know, with, I know that he's provided bags, and then when they do those cleanups, then we'll send a truck out, that following Monday or whatever, to pick up what they've done, so.
But that's better, from past president, that's who we adopted for only, like, eight persons. Just. Guide them, like, come and ask. It's, well.
No, I, I. I think we've always been able to accommodate that informally without, uh, any formal agreements or anything. Yeah.
But if they, if, if somebody asks any of us, they.
Yeah, call me or Ed, yeah.
Um, and then, the other thing I just want everybody to look up out, was that, on this thread, um, I, after leaving our last meeting, I was like, I know that there are people out there, they want to get involved, sometimes you just get in, or, get involved, so I just said, we're gonna do, you know, um, Rainy said, I don't have anyone in, that I can find that will, this thing, so I put it on Facebook, created this then, invited people, like, downtown, and, um, the local motor park, and I think, a lot of people, I made a ton, you know, I was really trying to build, um, and, the over twenty people that showed up, they were at local motor park, and, a group, two employees, Starbucks, brought coffee, iced coffee, and I, I thought there was a birthday party, and I go, are you really up? We're like, yeah, we wanted to help out, so we had this mall for freshness, and then we went down the street, and I said, you know, um, we don't really have a fan, um, I just really want to see people, like, come and show up, I said, let's go down, and heavily packed areas, you know, let's go down the hill, let's just survey the block, you know, and we'll pick up trash along the way, let's look at the kinds of trash, I, forget, you know, is there, um, you know, where, where are public areas, so everyone's, like, went off down the street, and you met up, that was, but, um, but we had, we did, that's maybe a awesome job, you know, the things that we found, that there was a lot of, was, um, like cigarette butts, and where it was, there was a lot of fashion , we thought, that's one way, help the city, but, uh, and, 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 um, and also, we noticed, like, um, you know, there were weed alleys and stuff, so the next time we're actually, on Monday, twenty second, actually birthday, at six, at local motor park, we're all going to work together on the alley, um, second, second and third, dump trash, um, and we'll talk to business owners, who knows that we're there, and, um, we're helping out, and just trying to, you know, get anything, or, or.
No, if you're just picking up trash, pull the weeds, that's fine.
Sure. It's, um, it's Monday, April twenty second, we have local motor best, it's, and. That's one thing I noticed about young people, they don't like to, yeah. So, um, so we're gonna try and see, um, but it went really well, and I left a little fire, like, it. People were like, yeah. Pardon me?
Pardon. Oh. Yeah. Nice, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, good. Perfect, go out there. Yeah. 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 The next, kind of, the next, uh, that's not the clean, and then, that is really, but that, I'm crazy question, I am, I am so confused, and I, I have trouble, just, just email, and I do not do Facebook, and all that, so, when you, I have any of these kind of things, can you, uh, just want to email me, uh, so I?
Uh, this is awesome, make shirts, and, um, give a hashtag, this hashtag, it's trashy, guys have probably seen it, you know, online, but there's a, it's trashy, hashtag, it's trashy in California, and, you know, just, a young group of people, and then, you know, we put out things, hey, trashes, we're looking to get trashy, whatever, you know, it's kind of funny, but on the app, it says, um, downtown investors, and I pulled up, yeah, there was people that had, um, you know, landed themselves, downtown investors, and went downtown, they talked to the owners, so, you know, swept up, put trash, asked people that were having more time, water, or whatever, but they were, they were downtown investors, already, they were, and as far as business owners, that's, downtown business, so we needed, Facebook, we shared, you know, to those downtown business owners, and, 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 about their, name code, I've already had, three other people, but are downtown business owners that are gonna, and, but these guys, kind of, it's, you know, as we were, uh, we, and that will , hopefully, hopefully, they'll.
Uh, I got a, I got a question on, for, uh, uh, on our, on our plastics, uh, the rock sites, it'd be, that's a. Would it, would it, uh, help any, or just could you put dumpster out there, just up to nine plastics, ten plastics? Can't make this stuff possible? That's the problem right now is that, uh, people would take their plastics too now than one of, but other than like, the market or the rest of it, great dumpster there, and great, we'd be dumping. Everybody, everybody knows that, I just thought if we could allocate any of that, I would say we have to, that sort of, this stuff, tires. I wish we were able to... That's part of the station. Right? That's a major question. And it has to go down, but by there on the way here, everyone is probably jammed. Uh, all we can do, I guess, is just have a group, please, uh, here. Anything else on our, on our, you know, this place?
I actually, back on that, I just don't have, they did remove all of their drop things, they did it, and I'm personally there to help with education. It was there really helping others, but it's great to find the number, there's a lot of, like, that number are only plastics.
And there's a lot of plastic, they just don't have enough, but there's...
And I don't, I think that, I think that there were these, probably a lot of people that were, you know, that, you see access, days with them. But I feel like maybe that aren't, would take the education part, like, look, I don't know, it's super hard. This, this recycling program has been, but I'm like, I just want to have her side recycle, learn reality of it, and is that, if you need to work with my, out, if we had that at the parking and site, would there be a person that helps people, or is that not?
We just had a little bit of that discussion today, and I, I guess I don't want to get too far into it because it's not really an agenda item, but we will put an item solely focused on recycling on next month's agenda.
Okay.
Anything else on your name? If not, I can do, do the garden's birthday celebration, that's a good question. Regarding, and any last minute needs or changes, plans, or anything, can you, uh, continue with the garden and birthday celebration on April twentieth, like the Saturday, nine...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I do have some material, I don't know if you think it'd be appropriate, but I received some material from the Bureau of Reclamation, dealing mostly with water conservation, um, the droughts, but they're like children's activity books is what they are. I don't know if, I could, I could definitely bring those Saturday if you'd like.
Those packets, we've got first Friday, uh, I thought those were good, and, uh, I have a lot of masks out there, uh, for the committee, a lot of, a flashbang.
Mr. Chairman, you're...
All right.
Okay.
For how long do you...
In mass, they have everything set up as far as the table, for their, um, fifteen minutes of reading. And, uh... The only thing we need was chairs. Yeah. Chairs, uh, some water, uh, they need, they need warm this week.
I'm playing, I didn't like last...
And those attending were, please, ice.
Uh, how many water bottles did you want me to, were you still planning on handing out water bottles on Saturday?
Uh, down water bottles, water bottles, and the, being as a lot of kids, coloring books, crayons.
Look, we did give a lot.
That, yeah, that, last, last year, we, uh, five.
Uh, a bottle of water, ice water, dark, yeah, right. Water bottles, like, water, the, oh, yeah, ice water.
Probably be your heart.
That's one of those, I got four or two person...
Yeah, like, she had her...
Then you just fill it up with ice, and it has, but you...
Hey, anything else on that? Can we add a few in this question?
Oh.
I don't know, I think they said there was like seventy five. I, I have to move my... I, I type your parts off. Oh, okay. Okay, that's it. Isn't yours coming to work? Give you common awards, okay? Uh, purchase, first, anything? Okay. Okay. Get to be advocate, and, okay, okay, dollars, all of your, uh, eight dollars, plus, and then, five cars. Oh, they were trees, that's the guy. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're, oh, wait, I don't know. Yes, sir. On Arbor Day celebration, updated plans, uh, we purchased Kingdom Arbor Day, it's in, uh, the...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we did, uh, we purchased, uh, four trees out of the Clean Cities budget, and then additional two on public works. Um, we've picked those up, and they're stored over at Parks and Rec. They will be delivered over to Firefighters Park for planning on the twenty seventh.
Uh, we usually, uh, fully group, obviously, sometimes the holes are already done. Truly round, break up, no, no. There will be, hopefully, there, some member will be here. Of course, now, for the, listen.
Yes.
On the way. What? I don't know, I'm not, and she wanted me...
Yeah, I, I... Okay. Hey, anything else on, on, I mean, I, if not, you, uh, Kingdom Ice Bowl. It was, the, the Firefighters Park, it was not the one by that school, it was on Detroit.
On the west side of the pier.
Detroit and Main Street, next to the middle school.
Middle school.
I wish you'd get it.
It's by the, across the street from the old Safeway. It's on the other side of Stockton Hill Road from the old Safeway.
And on these highways, why? Up the left?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, just, yeah, further than that, it's down toward the fairgrounds. Um, discussion possible, actually, regarding plans, people, uh, the city of Kingdom Expo, people for Thursday, May thirtieth.
So I guess we just kind of want to go over a little bit, what items you'd like to give away at that event, or what other materials you'd like to have on hand?
I think that is an excellent event to give away useful bags, basically the same, a first right of...
Okay. So water bottles, reusable bags, and what's that we have out there?
Color books.
Color, color and books.
That's one I think I would really like to stuff, uh, information in bags and out. That's something, yeah, able, I was...
Oh, you have stuff now?
I can, that's something I can, okay.
We did, yeah.
We did, yeah. Starts at, uh, four, we'll be down there setting up, you know, before that, so if you want to be down there around three, three thirty or something, that'd be fine.
About three thirty?
Yeah.
And then second, last, two, three?
Yeah, between Grand View and First.
That's it, that's it. Will, will you, other works I can, I don't know.
Yes, probably, probably not as much because, uh, we're letting all the other departments in on the front, so.
You could bring that, that, X, X.
Oh, I'm sure, we can, we'll, we'll find the sandbags, we can, we'll take care of that.
Oh, mask, uh, uh...
We have the suit, and we did, and, and more than one person can use it rather than one, rather than one person having to stuff that thing, uh, if it's, if it's a poor evening, it gets real hot, so I can have to...
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah. Thanks. It's, it's a, a styrofoam shaped like garbage, oh my, I can't picture, right, shaped like garbage, but we did halfway open it, based on, uh, a green, like, uh, and, uh, where we put it to...
And filled a bit.
Filled, filled a bit.
Filled a bit.
We had, we had a, a, yes, yes. Filled a bit. One of my really like, I'm sorry, but we didn't drop. Anything else on, on the, uh, on the, I mean...
We'll probably carry that over because we will have another commission meeting, so we'll, we'll carry that over because we'll, we'll have another commission meeting before that date, and we'll show you the setup that we got laid out.
All right, new business, I have four, May, uh, Captain Fox Park Trail Program, uh, discussion of possible action regarding qualification, improvement, or extension of the... Uh, the napkin was in our pocket, uh, is pretty outdated, napkin, probably used in the last, our last, uh, they have carried, and a lot of these people are no longer part of it, or, you know, are retaining it.
No, then that napkin?
I sent the same napkin, since, well, with the chairman of this commission back in two thousand and fourteen.
Um, so one of my questions was, is, um, possible request on contacting, I think that application looks good, and I think that it would still work, I just have to kind of, we get inspired. So, I, I wonder if contact, like, groups, they'd like to, their little agreement, and if not, I wondered if, um, we can reuse the sign of the team that adopted it, and then we can say, "Box of reusable"?
Yeah, I think just, I don't know that we could reuse the signs, I think we'd probably just print it once, yeah, and recycle it.
I have, I have a phone this...
Help me. So I will get to that, because I have a long list of people that I reached out, and there's so many more, but I just wanted to ask about this program that, um, another class that I took in the state was, you know, and the reason they have to tell you...
I don't know what, I don't know what that would be, um...
I looked at, um, I looked at other programs, and like, as long as the parents willing to sign for them, it didn't look like they had a, and I did, for like, on ramp, and Uh, we'll probably carry that over because we will have another commission meeting, so we'll, we'll carry that over because we'll, we'll have another commission meeting before that date and we'll show you the setup that we got laid out.
All right, new business, I have four. They, uh, got some box park trail program. Uh, discussion of possible action regarding qualification, improvement or extension of them. Uh. The. Math book was in our packet, uh, is pretty outdated. Math book. Try to use him for last, our last, uh. They have carried and a lot of these people are no longer part of it, or, you know, are retaining them.
No, then that math was.
I sent the same, that's his, both was the chairman of the commission back, uh.
And, so one of my questions, why is, um, possible request to find contact? I think that application looks good. And I think that it would still work, I just have to kind of think it's inspired. So I, I wonder if contact, like groups, they'd like to, their little agreement. And if not, I wondered if, um, we can reuse the sign. Of the king. That adopted it and then we can take blocks available.
Yeah, I, I think just, I don't know that we could reuse those signs, I think we'd probably just print it once, yeah. And recycle it.
I have. I have a phone this.
Help me. Listen. So I will get to that here, we have a long list of people that I reached out. And there's so many more, but I just wanted to ask about this program that. Now, um, another class that I took at the state was, uh, how. And the reason they have to follow yours.
I don't know what, I don't know what that would be, um.
I looked at the, um, I looked at other programs that, like, as long as the parents willing to sign for them. It didn't look like they had a. And I get it, we're like on, on ramp, at like a busy, busy streets, maybe like parks, trails, um.
Like A-Dog, A-Dog.
Look at that.
That's weird.
A-Dog. Or cheap. Uh, we saw with a parent. He's that close to.
Maybe some of those smaller.
Uh, during, during the, uh, day of caring, it's counts.
Okay, and then.
As long as there's a correction.
So I'd say, maybe we can reach out, we don't hear back from our best. If these, these available, blocks available. Then I also wanted to look at possibly adopting the park and trails and some groups requested adopting the park. Um, the Rotary group just put in that ADA suite in Mac Park and they're also looking at. And so they will re-adopting the ten year. Um, the frisbee golf association, they, um, are in the process of signing a course at Fireman's Park. And they, um, they're also, and they would really like to adopt that park. Um, they, they kind of learning, may be interested in adopting the ten year, um, their, their students that park or their playground. Uh, and again, I have a number of groups of them. Um, also, uh, pick up pollution, pollution, um, against drift. Um, they've got, they're, uh, they would also be. Um, I wonder if they were related. Parks the park or co-sponsored park, and, and, or adopting the park. Um, uh, Frigga Colorado River Area Trailer Alliance, interested in adopting trailhead, white, white, blue trail or deal. Um, uh, Few Legal Services talked about the dog park, that's on, and, and that's right by the park. Um, Niche, interested in adopting the block, First Fridays, interest in adopting the block, First Fridays on, uh, the, the bathroom. Um, Lloyd's Express, Pinterest, Harvest West Third, um. Bitch Club, Sixty Shades Park, Flashpad, um, Four H, possibly the, will take trail downtown. So really everybody asked, like. Um, I think if we bring it up, um.
Would you, would you contact, your.
Yeah, and I, and I can do that, um, we can work on, I'll work with him and Donna on, uh, maybe revising the applications, just. One application to include parks and trails also, come up with the guidelines for how often those clearups would have to be and all that, so I can work on that and bring it back. If you go to, uh, well, the BLM website has a list of, uh, all the hiking trails, yeah, they have maps of the, of the hiking, area hiking trails. Union Penns, yeah. It's, uh, Monolith Gardens is what that trails go.
So there's a bike shop on downtown, uh, and by, you know, there's children, Ed. He's called, uh, yeah. Willie, Charles. Every map.
And there are some maps on the City Parks website.
Adopt the block and, well, that's, uh, uh, parks and trails. You have a lot of people that, often, adopt the block, they only do it. First, we can come to the second. And if nothing, that same block, especially that block, they're waiting to go.
That's.
And.
That, that button.
Someone did it to squeeze.
Someone, you need the service for stairs.
And then, and then, and then we look up and then, the movie right back again.
I don't like it, I, I didn't. Whoa. I found that this, this, that were on the blocks, really interesting. Now, and so I think that, kind of fun, just to stop, you think they've already, that's, that is possible. Um, but I'm sure that if you would, in whatever way.
I don't know about the elf's watch, even I know the elf's watch, have a suit, they have a top block. All right. Uh. I choose. Those. Then. Please. Well. Did anybody have anything else on this? And I think, I think this, we, area.
Yes, sir. We'll work on the application with Mr. Mearsman.
Oh, I think it's, right.
I mean, uh, city of Kingman management team, uh, service project, a discussion of possible action regarding communication. And, uh, service project. People will bring up area in front of ashes, Kmart, uh, building, recent commission analysts, and invite us. And that is our, as I think of the top of the block anyway, so what I think company trying to, uh, there are game on that, I think.
The service.
Twenty fifth, twenty fifth, that would be.
It's a Thursday, actually.
Thursday, okay.
Yep.
What time, uh?
Uh, starting at eight o'clock.
Eight in the morning?
In the morning.
Yes.
Uh, if, if, if they're doing the same fashion. We always did, mind change to E M P.
Exactly, a lawyer, we just, um, we haven't, we haven't came to area in six months from there, uh, but our first, uh, top of the block. That would give us a few people to be happy. Just very few people out there doing that, can you? And then Saturdays is a bad day for you. That's it, so it's, I think. And this, um, um.
Open volunteer search.
Yeah, I, I think if you got people that would like to come, sure.
You make motion that we, we, this, uh, all that are, uh, bombing, we used, uh, adopt the block for Thursday, maybe a clock. It, it sounds like, well, that would pass, uh, placed on the corner.
That was.
Okay, well.
Oh, wow.
That's a, that's a. First part.
King do the.
Everybody. That's, uh, uh, ever so often A-Dog comes to the.
Last.
It's right. Motion has been made for a second.
Oh, second.
Which has been the eighty second, April the twenty fifth, okay, uh. Question. I, 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 I. I promised my tuition numbers. Consequences, ability, and this. Consequences at seven hours, best, and I, and, uh. You're lost. Hey, uh, that's a. Fight. Get the.
Okay, uh, can our, uh, if, if, if volunteer groups is on twenty second, Monday, Thursday, at six, you know, local park. Uh, that I've gone to, uh, I've been cleaning up the yard on the corner of third. Have to be better, sure, by. Uh, and so that's really a fun project for, for volunteers, so, must do that, um, com. And there is a young man. Guys. I just wanted to give those, that, part of those. He's doing a cleanup, organizing, and it's going to be on, uh. He is having a, kind of that fire. There, um, I think the alley or the lot across the.
Square ground.
That fairground?
Yeah, square ground.
Um. Yeah, yeah. He just looked him up, this young man, his grandmother said that he is cleaning up all on his own. He lost my phone, he doesn't know. Okay, so his name is Nicholas Haslett. Um, said that, um. H twenty four, got a virus with her. One little boy is trying to make a different, like, fashion. Nicholas Haslett, thirteen. Those people, as they're scouring his neighborhood, he's parting paper, paper bottles, soda can, other garbage, create a cleaner environment. He's walking trips by himself. Said I started looking at all the trash and I got tired of it. I decided to walk and pick it up. So I thought that was really cool, but then he wanted to organize. This, uh, H twenty four at eight AM in front of fires. Twenty one oh four, King. Anyone wishing to make a better place, welcome to.
Okay.
Um. Good call. Call me, yeah.
Got it.
I'm a map.
I see. Again, motherboard, uh, that should happen to you. I can't think of anything I have. We put that onto our jet, so that I. How many questions? If I, 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 I. Those.